Well, good evening, everybody. We are here tonight to present an informational session and conduct a public hearing on a couple of different proposed permits for the Arbor Hills landfill that are put forth by Emerald RNG and Arbor Hills Energy. So it's going to be a little bit different than other times because we do have a couple permit actions. So my name is Jennifer Dixon and I'm going to be hosting the meeting tonight. A couple of things to go over before we get started really into the meat of the thing. So we are going to be muting all of your lines during the meeting and we are recording this meeting. So if for some reason you need to jump off for a little, a minute, or you have to jump off early and you need to come back. Either way, we are going to be recording this meeting tonight and we will be posting it on our YouTube channel and we'll definitely share that out with all the meeting attendees once that's ready for viewing. A couple of just notes on how things are going to work tonight. And I'll go over this a little bit more in a couple of minutes, but I'd just like to remind people a couple of times because it can get a little bit tricky. So the first thing we're going to do is we're going to do an informational session and that's basically going to be where we're kind of providing you some information about the air quality division, part of Eagle and also the, a little bit on the proposed permits that are going to be in front of us tonight. And after that, we're going to open it up for question and answer from all of you. So I'll talk a little bit about how you can get those questions to us in a second. And we're going to be happy to answer those questions. We have a panelist that I'm going to be, a bunch of panelists that I'll be introducing in a little bit here that will be able to hopefully answer the questions that you have. Then after that informational session, we're going to be shifting gears to the public hearing. So during the public hearing portion, that's where we're going to be taking your comments for the record and we won't be responding to questions. If you ask them during your comment, that's just simply for you to tell us what you think about things or any comments that you have, any requested changes or anything like that. So I just want to be very careful to just reiterate that that beginning portion will be a presentation with question and answer. And then once we shift to the hearing, we won't really be answering questions. So just wanted to go over that really quickly with folks. Now getting to how you can ask us questions. So you can use that question and answer box on your screen to type in any questions that you have. Sometimes as our permit engineer goes through the presentation, you might have some questions that pop up. Feel free to put those in there. And at that time, it's not a problem at all. Or you can wait until after we get done with the presentation and then I'll make sure that I leave enough time for folks to be typing in any questions that they might have. You can also raise your hand, use that raise hand icon and ask your question verbally. We're happy to unmute you and have you ask your question verbally. I know we do have a couple of people that have called in tonight. So if you're calling in and you're not listening at all on the computer or participating in that way, you can type pound two on your phone and that will raise your hand for us. So I'll go over these again, once we get to that part of the night, just to remind folks on how to do that. So. All right. So at this point, I'm just kind of showing a little bit of our agenda and the first thing I'm going to do is introduce our air quality division staff. But the first person that I want to introduce is our air quality division director, Annette Switzer. And I know she wanted to just welcome you all to the meeting tonight. So Annette, whenever you are ready, you can go ahead and unmute yourself and take the floor.
Great. Thanks Jen. And thanks to all of you for joining us tonight to talk about these two proposed projects at the Arbor Hill landfill. Public participation is a very important part of the air permitting process. Your input as well as the time you're taking to attend this meeting are also very important. As the decision maker on this permit, I'll be listening closely to tonight's conversation. I'll be considering all your comments when I make my final decision. My staff are happy to be able to provide you with any information you may find helpful and are ready to answer your questions about the proposed projects. Taking time out of your schedules and balancing things you have going on are challenging. So I want to thank you again for joining us and I'm going to pass it back to Jen to get us started on the conversation.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Annette. So at this time, I would like the other panelists and even my co-hosts, if you guys don't mind, just turn your cameras on really quick. I just want everybody to know who is here and who you're going to be hearing from tonight. And we'll go over this again and after we get through with the presentation so that you don't have to feel like you have to remember names. But the first person that I want to introduce is Ambrosia Brown and she is our permit engineer for this. And you're going to be hearing primarily from her this evening. So Amber, if you don't mind just saying hi.
Hello.
And then the other person you're going to be hearing a bit from is Mike Kovalchuk and he's one of our inspectors. So Mike, if you want to say hi to everybody, that'd be great as well.
Hello. Thanks for attending.
All right. So we have a couple of other folks that are going to be on our panel and the first one on my screen is Keisha Williams. She's our toxicologist. So she helps with part of the permit review process, but a lot of what she does is just look at different kinds of toxics. So I know you can talk a little bit more about that later, but if you want to say hello.
Hello.
All right. And then Erica Wolf works in our air monitoring section. So I always try to be, I'd always try to emphasize that a little bit because we talk about monitoring and then we're going to talk about modeling. So Erica works in our air monitoring section and she works with our stationary air monitoring, air monitoring stations. And she'll be able to help answer questions about things associated with that. So Erica, do you want to say hi to everybody?
Hi.
All right. And then the last person on the panel is Eric Alek Konacki and he was our modeler. So he looks basically at what the company is proposing and uses a computer program to say where different pollutants might be impacting the area around the landfill and makes sure that all of that is going to be complying with air quality rules and regulations. So Alec, if you want to say hi to folks.
Hello.
All right. And then I actually have two co-hosts tonight. I have Caitlin De Vries and she is newer to our environmental support division and she, you might, you come to more of these meetings, you might be seeing more of Caitlin. So Caitlin, thanks for joining tonight. And then Jim Ostrowski, of course, is also on board tonight handling things in the background for us. So. So that's our panel panelists. Besides Amber, if you guys want to turn your cameras off, that's awesome. Amber, you want to leave yours on? I'm going to be passing it over to you in just a second here. So just to kind of go over our agenda for tonight, like I said, Amber's going to be walking us through a presentation on the proposed permits. And then Mike's going to also join her for a little bit of that at the end. Then we're going to shift to that question and answer session. We'll be able to have some interaction from all of you. And you guys can utilize that question and answer box or your raise hand features. Then we're going to get to the public hearing. So the public hearing is going to happen either at seven o'clock or when we're done answering question, whatever comes earlier. So if we get to six forty-five and we're kind of done with questions, we'll shift right into that hearing. But if we get to seven and maybe we still have a couple of questions, you know, I'll try to kind of mess with that timeframe to make sure that you guys have as much time as you can to make your comments, but you also get your questions answered. We're also going to go over how to submit an official comment. So I always want to reiterate that tonight is not the only time that you have to submit a comment. The comment period is open until May twenty-second. So you'll have some time after the hearing if you want to submit a comment in other ways and we'll talk about what those ways are. Also talk really briefly about where you can find more information. So if this is kind of the first time you're hearing about these proposed permit actions and you want to look into it a little bit more, we could talk about that. And then I'll let you know how you can contact Amber and the rest of the team to get more information if you need it. So Amber, at this time, if you would like to share your screen and then start kind of walking us through some of the more detailed information about the air quality division and these proposed projects, that would be great.
Okay. So you can see my screen, right?
Yep. Everything looks great on this end.
All right. Thank you. So my name is Ambrosia, or I go by Amber for short. You might hear it either way. I am the lead permit engineer who worked with a team of air quality staff here at Eagle to review the Emerald and Arbor Hills air permit applications. So before we get into the details of the project, I'd like to briefly talk about what the air quality division does and how the permitting process works. So air pollution, first of all, comes from many different types of sources. Obviously, you know, people think power plants, any kind of fuel burning equipment, basically any industrial sources and including landfills. So the overall mission of AQD is to protect public health and the environment. And we provide this protection by using our authority under the state and federal laws through the regulation of these industrial sources. So AQD staff do many things. First of all, as we discussed, we have monitors. And we can monitor the level of air pollutants. We look at different toxics to make sure the public health is protected. We conduct inspections of regulated facilities such as the existing landfill to landfill gas to energy plant and the proposed renewable natural gas plant. Those would also be subject to inspections. We review applications and write air permits for sources of air pollutants to ensure the proposed operations comply with the rules and regulations in place to protect public health. So the air quality division has the authority to permit sources of air pollutants. However, I want to point out, there's a few items the draft permit does not cover. And we do not have the ability to regulate. So these include zoning, noise and traffic on public roads. If you have questions or concerns about these types of issues, you want to talk to your local government. In addition to those, AQD does not determine where a facility is needed or if a project is needed when reviewing an air permit application. So we just evaluate the project as proposed to make sure that it meets applicable rules and regulations in place to protect public health. So I'm going to give you a short overview of the air permitting process. So first, the company decides they want to install, modify or construct a source of air emissions and they select a location. Then the company submits a air permit application. The application is reviewed by an engineer like myself. We review the information provided from the company and determine if their request can meet the state and federal rules and regulations. During the review, other AQD staff are involved, as mentioned. Like for toxics, we have a toxicologist, Keisha. And we look at toxics or as we call them tax to see how they impact the potentially impacts surrounding communities. So if these rules and regulations are met, the engineer creates a draft permit which is agreed upon by the AQD district staff in the company as well. So if permit, if public comment is required, like is in this case, the draft permit is posted for a public comment. So the public comment period, it's, it's a very important part of the permitting process and it's why we're here tonight. So once the comment period ends, we evaluate each and every comment. And comments can lead to changes in the draft permit and it impacts the final decision. So finally, a decision is made on the permit application. So this decision can be to approve the permit as written, approve the permit with changes or to deny the permit. This decision is based on whether the company's proposed project can meet air quality regulations. Again, we cannot base our decision on the need for the project or the popularity of the project. So let's talk about what Arbor Hills and Emerald RNG are requesting in this proposed project. So first for a little background, landfills produce gas as materials contained within breakdown. So these gases continue to be produced for decades after landfill operations are ended. These gases contain toxic air contaminants and they contain odors. So landfills are required to capture these gases and to control them to reduce environmental impacts and reduce the odors in the area. So how are they currently doing it? Well, currently the landfill gas is treated by being combusted and flares or in turbines at the existing Arbor Hills energy plant, which uses that gas produced energy. The combustion of the gas breaks down volatiles in the gas, including toxics and the odorous chemicals. The proposed project is to build a new plant to clean this gas. So it meets the requirements to be added to a natural gas line instead of burning the gas in a flare or turbine on site. And thus that reduces emissions from combustion on site. So the landfill gas could still be burned using the existing turbines or landfill flare, but that would not be the usual mode of operation. So overall, this project can really be divided into two parts. The first part is a modification to the permit requirements for the existing turbines. Those are listed here. I'm not to go through every change, but among the changes, the turbines would be required to burn sulfur treated gas during normal operation and to have an annual operation restriction. That annual operation restriction reflects that the gas that would have previously been burned in the turbines would instead be treated in the renewable gas plant instead. Slides. There we go. The proposed renewable gas plant would treat the gas to remove the chemicals and impurities to meet certain specifications. The process requires an spec flare to combust gases that do not meet the specifications. It also requires a thermal oxidizer for the destruction of unwanted volatile contents that have been removed from the gas. So I'll be explaining this a little bit more on the next slide. But I just want you to see overall project, it is broken into two parts. But is considered one project because it's at the same stationary source at the landfill. So therefore there, but because landfill and the renewable natural gas plant would have different ownerships, there are two different draft permits. And by, I mean Arbor Hills is, you know what I'm saying, guys? So now let's go into the, what is a new renewable gas plant? So for your understanding of the proposed project, here is a generic example of renewable gas plant. So as you can see, there's three stages of treatment. The first stage is standard treatment for all landfill gas going on now. They remove the moisture and particulate. So this is the kind of treatment that's been historically used on site. The second treatment involves removing of sulfurous contaminants. For the proposed project, the turbines would be required to combust gas that had at least this level of treatment. The third stage of treatment, this advanced treatment removes the remaining components to make the gas meet natural gas specification requirements. So the gas can then be added to the natural gas line locally. And the removed chemicals are then combusted in a thermal oxidizer. For the proposed plant, if gases do not meet the specifications for any reason, it'd be sent to a separate flare. Oops. Sorry, everybody. Now that we've reviewed the overall project and what the companies are proposing, let's discuss what occurs during the permit review. So the AQD looks at several things. That includes the level of emissions to figure out how the project and facility should be reviewed. And based on the level of emissions and the type of equipment, we determine what kind of review is needed, including the rules and regulations that apply. Stops. Sorry, it's skipping slides. Okay. So throughout the review process and during development of the proposed draft permit, AQD has ensured the applicable state and federal rules have been met. So one example of this is we use computer simulations. We refer to this as modeling. And we've used this for nitric oxide, carbon dioxide, sulfur dioxide and particulate matter less than ten microns and particulate matter with less than 2.5 microns to demonstrate that no violations to the national standards are expected. The AQD also reviewed the toxic air contaminants or tax emissions from the project and compared those to the emissions to the state and federal health screening. So the state of Michigan health-based screening levels are designed to protect against health issues like developing cancer or breathing problems. So our review proposed emissions determine that they would not violate these healthy screening levels. Here is a table that shows the change in emissions associated with the proposed project. So again, divided into two parts, the Arbor Hills energy turbines in the first column would be taking that reduction in annual throughput in fuel type so that it decreases the emissions as shown. Here you can see that there is a increase in VOCs calculated, however, that really reflects the calculation methods used rather than an actual increase in emissions because actual emissions would still be going down because we're proposing to use them less. The renewable natural gas plant in the next column would be new. So all the proposed emissions from that part would be increases. But as you can see, those increases are significantly smaller than those being reduced by the AHG emission change. So as you can see, in the total project emission changes, this is a pretty good project when it comes to having emission reductions. So these resulting level of emission reductions that we're talking about reflects the project if it's installed and operated as described in their permit application. Now, how do we know that they're going to actually install and operate it as in their application? Well, that is really essentially a purpose of a permit. It requires the list of requirements the company must meet to ensure that they're going to meet, do, install and operate as described in their application. So these requirements include, as listed here, we have proper use, monitoring, maintenance and equip, they must, you have restrictions on fuel. They have emission limits. They have stack testing requirements. A malfunction abatement plan. And all of these are going to ensure hopefully that they do install and operate as they have proposed. But the determination if the company is following these requirements and their permit requirements are made by the district inspector. So now I'm going to pass the discussion on to Mike.
Thank you, Amber. Hello, my name is Mike Kovalchuk. I am the air quality inspector for the Arbor Hills landfill and the existing gas to energy plant. There are several ways that we check to determine compliance at a facility. One is by onsite inspections, which are often unannounced. We check to determine compliance with their air permits and any applicable state and federal regulations. This means physically looking at the process equipment, how it operates and includes the associated exhaust stacks and control devices. After the inspection, records that are required to be maintained by the permits are requested and reviewed. We also deploy handheld air emission detection devices to augment our compliance determination. At Arbor Hills, we have used two different types of H2S detectors. We regularly use a methane detector and also a specialized camera that can visually identify leaking landfill gas. There's also a landfill perimeter monitoring system consisting of six different monitoring stations which continuously sample for methane and H2S. We may also conduct additional inspections in response to complaints. A complaint investigation is like an inspection typically focusing on the area of the facility which might be associated with the complaint. After we conduct inspection, we write a report. Once the report is finalized, the report is posted on Eagle's website and is available to the public. A note, there are a couple of ways to submit a complaint to our office. One way is online at the Arbor Hills link at the Eagle AQD website. Another way is simply to call, call us at our office in Jackson District. Next slide. I'm going to discuss three main highlights of the compliance history for this facility and give a brief update of where we are at today. Approximately 10 years ago, we started to see levels of H2S in the landfill gas increase. This was due to the type of waste that was being in place in the landfill at that time. Concurrent with the higher H2S content, we saw increases in the sulfur dioxide emission rates from the turbines at the energy plant, which eventually led to permit emission limit exceedances. These and other related violations were referred to enforcement for resolution. In December of 2021, a consent decree was finalized to resolve the violations. The CD had an extensive compliance plan associated with it. Most importantly, it required that the H2S content of the landfill gas be controlled. It also allows the company to choose a compliance pathway that involved installing an RG, RNG plant while keeping their existing gas to energy plant, which could continue to be used on a limited basis. In August 2022, a modification of the CD was finalized. The modification was necessary since it became clear that the company would not be able to meet the original deadlines, mostly due to supply chain issues and acquiring the necessary new process equipment. The impact on the environment caused by delay was mitigated by still requiring landfill gas be treated according to the original deadline and prior to the RNG plant becoming operational. There was also a new requirement added to build a pipeline so the landfill gas could be treated in all normal operating scenarios. Also in August 2022, Eagle issued a violation notice to the company for commencing construction of the project without a permit or a construction waiver. This project was eligible for a construction waiver, but Eagle could not issue one because the air permit applications were not considered complete. The violation was considered resolved when complete applications were received, noting also the tight installation schedule imposed on the company by the CD. And now bring us to the present. We were informed by the company that the sulfur treatment system became operational on May 5. Note that the system is separate from the actual RNG plant and it was ruled to be exempt from permitting, but it is subject to other state air quality rules. Going forward, all the landfill gas that goes either to the landfill flares, the existing energy plant or the new RG plant will be treated. An exception to this is if there is a malfunction of the STS itself. In that case, the STS is bypassed and the gas is sent directly to the landfill flares. Finally, we've been told that the construction of the RNG plant is well-advanced and likely will be completed in the August, September timeframe. Thanks.
All right. Well, thanks, Mike, and thanks, Amber. Much appreciated. Appreciate the information. We're going to go ahead and shift over to a question and answer. If folks have questions, we're definitely open for that. I'll give you a couple of minutes because I know when you do these things, sometimes it takes a second to actually either have your questions ready or to type them in. So I see Dave Drinon that you have your hand up. So hold on one second. Now I will unmute you and allow you to ask your question. All right. You should be able to unmute yourself now as soon as you're ready.
Yeah, did I do it right?
You did. That's a gold star because sometimes it is like a little
I'm experienced at this. So, so and Mike kind of maybe answered it in a way. But it's a comment that I'm going to put in, that I'll, I'll be putting in writing too, is the the permits don't have a requirement for any sulfur removal of the landfill gas when it's routed to the flares. You know, there is a requirements in the, in these new permits for if the, when the gas is routed to the renewable natural gas plant to remove the sulfur. There's a requirement when the gas is routed to the energy plant, the turbine plant, the existing turbine plant to remove the sulfur. But if the gas goes to the flares, there is no requirement to remove the sulfur. And this is, this is kind of geek talk. But this is one contiguous site. And so the emissions from the site, regardless of having different owners, has to be all considered. So you know, my comment is going to be that I believe there should be a permit condition. I believe that the STS is add-on pollution control. And there should be operating parameters defined in the permit. And when those operating parameters aren't met or the piece of equipment malfunctions or is offline, it's a malfunction and a deviation from the permit. Without that, the landfill has a potential to continue to emit sulfur dioxide at the, at the same level they've been emitting it for years.
So that's a good question, good points. And I'm going to actually pass it over to Amber first, but I forgot to have my panelists turn your cameras on. So we are to the panelist section. I apologize. So if you guys could turn your cameras on, that would be appreciated. But yeah, very good point to bring up, Dave. And I'm glad that you said you were planning on making an actual comment about it. But Amber, do you want to address some of Dave's comments that he made there?
Sure. Um, and actually it's on the last slide that I had supplemented, if anybody had commented on it. But we did actually review the worst case scenario based on what they're allowed to do, right? And based on what they're allowed to do, would be to, you know, send those over. would be to, you know, send those over without the sulfur treatment. The thing is, they are already permitted to do so, and this was not a permit for the flares, if that makes sense. So we're not modifying
Site, Amber. It's a, it's one, it's a contiguous site.
Yeah, like, so when we did the review, we, we assumed that the emissions, the worst case scenario was that they were going over to the flares to be burned without the sulfur control.
Do you want me to go to that slide, Amber? Are you talking about the one with the table? Sure. I'll do that really quick while you guys are talking about it.
However, you know, basically there, there wouldn't be, when I reviewed it, they weren't required to do that. And basically, they're just volunteering to do so, from what I'm understanding, Mike. That was not in the consent agreement, and it's not, wasn't part of that review. That's not what I mean, the last slide. Like, I mean, the last slide and the whole thing, Jen.
Oh, I'm, oh, I see what you're saying, Amber. I apologize. That's my bad. Yeah. So like one of the supplemental information slide is what you're talking about. Okay. Yeah, let me, I'll get to that in a minute. Mike, did, did you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I want to add a couple of things. So one, Dave, there, there's a, you know, there's an existing permit for the landfill gas flares. Okay, and that permit allows the burning of a lot of gas, right? And so, you know, from that perspective, you know, the RNG plant or AHE, you know, they can send gas, you know, to, to the flares. However, we have the CD, you know, the CD is enforceable. It'll be there for a number of years. You know, as part of that CD, it does require, you know, that they operate this STS. They said, you know, and I kind of outlined in my presentation, when the RNG plant is operating, the STS, the STS has to be operating. When the AHE plant is operating, the STS, when the flares is operating, the STS has to be, you know, has to be operating. If the STS breaks, you know, of course, the gas has to go somewhere. At that point, it will go, you know, to the landfill gas flares. There's one other exception. If at some point in the future, the landfill decides to build a, a system to separate low-quality landfill gas and are able to do that, they can send the low-quality landfill gas, that's usually low in methane, and it'll also generally be low in H2S. They can send that directly to the flare. But as of now, there's, there is no such system. And the quality of the gas that appears to be, that will be sent to the RNG plant should be sufficient to meet, you know, the requirements, you know, in the contract between, you know, the landfill and Emerald.
So I, Jennifer brought up this diagram. And as you can see, we did review, we were reviewing the worst case scenarios as we discussed. And when we review, we always look at the worst case scenarios when we're doing like project emissions for the entire facility, that kind of thing. And so as you can see here, we did look at, that was always, there's a line right there. It, it goes straight from the wells to the landfill flares at the top. You can see that. That was reviewed to be continuing as an option for them.
And that still has to meet all the air quality rules and regulations. They don't get to necessarily bypass, but I understand what your point is on that.
It's already permitted. So they have to, they have to still meet their current permit to be able to do that operation.
I don't want to belabor.
They have to meet, they have to meet the requirements of the CD. Right? So it, the, the two, the two permits, the CD and the renewable operating permit, all of that has to be, you know, has to be met. So like I said, I outlined the scenarios, you know, it does require control.
Okay, so I just don't understand why, why we have a judge sign the consent decree and then don't include it in a permit.
Well, you know, I mean, it's a good question, but, but keep in mind, so the permits are written, you know, based on what's in the permit application. And, and that's how the conditions were drafted. I, I will mention this, typically, when we do a renewable operating permit renewal, and, and of course, you know, one is coming up, we look at the CD and then we decide what of the CD conditions are considered applicable requirements. At that point, we generally incorporate them, you know, into, you know, into the renewable operating permit. And so it'll be a more, you know, seamless connection, you know, between the CD and the two permits themselves.
So thank you guys for all of that information. Dave, I don't know if that helped get you where you wanted to be, but you have the information. I think that a comment still is probably appropriate in this case because I'm not sure that we satisfied what you were looking for.
But we should let everyone else have change for
Yeah, I was just going to ask, do you have anything else you want to follow up? Are you good with that for right now?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you so much. I, I appreciate your patience on that one too. And, and I actually don't have any other questions in the question and answer box right now, and I don't have any other hands up. So I'll give you guys just a minute to think about if there's any other questions that you want. I'm going to go ahead and take it off the screen and kind of go back to the other one, why you guys are thinking about stuff here. All right, David Horan, I see that you have your hand up. I will go ahead and unmute you. And if you have a question, you can go ahead and ask it. You should be set whenever you're ready.
Oh, hi. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, sure can.
So in regards to the flares that they're allowed to use, I guess if the gas isn't good quality, then they're allowed to flare it. And then also if the equipment's down, they're allowed to use the flares. My question is, is there some, is there something that stipulates how often or they can do that? Like they can only do it, you know, whatever, 10% of the time? And are they using the same flares that are in existence or are these new flares?
Yeah, those are great questions. Amber, do you want to kind of address if there's any specific timeframes that they're allowed before it's not allowed anymore? And if they're going to be installing anything, any new equipment with relation to those flares?
So for the existing landfill flares, and I think there's federal regulations about this as well, there has to be backup in case the system goes down. And so they have to have the capability to, you know, because there's still, this is like we talked about, it's going to keep producing gas, whether or not the natural gas, renewable natural gas plant or the gas to energy plant is operational, right? So they have this backup with the flares and the flares have to be capable of handling like all of the gas. So I believe that that is how it's written currently in the ROP. Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But I believe that the current landfill flares are supposed to be able to handle all the gas. And there's no new restrictions on the existing landfill flares that belong to landfill associated with this project. There are limits on the flares associated with the renewable natural gas plant. Because we talked about, there's a thermal oxidizer, which is basically a flare. They're, they're kind of very similar. And then there's a, you know, a flare associated with that as well, that was in that diagram. That, I like that diagram. And those do have limits on them, and they're in the draft permit. So you can see those, but no, on the existing ones, there's not any new restrictions on those. Now, the thought is, of course, that, you know, as we talked about, when you burn gas in the flare, that energy is lost, right? There's, they're not gaining anything by burning it in a flare. If you make that into renewable natural gas, that is more profitable as well as, you know, making it into energy at the energy plant. You know, they sell that energy back to, to the grid. So there is incentive to not just burn it off and waste that gas. But i- is that in there as they have to? No.
There's no specific limit or requirement is what it sounds like, Dave. So hopefully that information is helpful. Did you have a follow-up? Or did you get the information you were looking for in that?
So I guess there's the existing flares that are in operation now are going to continue to be there, and they can use those as much as they want. And the only thing stopping them is the economic benefit of using the RNG plant. That's what I'm hearing. But I just know when they've, when they've had those flares in use, when the turbines go down, a lot of times we get more odors during that timeframe.
Okay.
And I know they've had issues with those flares, that they weren't operating correctly. And I mean, the experience of the people who live around here is regardless if it's GFL or Dance Disposal, the operator of the landfill sort of don't operate in the best interest of the community. They operate in whatever their best interest is. So I look at it like if for whatever reason they want to burn those players, they're just going to do it.
Yeah, I mean, that's
Without a restriction.
And I apologize for speaking over you. Yeah, I mean, it's definitely a good point to bring up. And Mike, I saw that you unmuted yourself, so I wasn't sure if you wanted to add something to that.
Oh, yeah, I mean, so there, there is some limitations on the existing, you know, permit, you know, for the flare. You know, so, so the Emerald can't send all the gas to those flares, you know, for 365 days. So there is a limitation. I don't remember the number, specific number of hours, so they can't send it.
But we could get that for you, for sure.
But, but normally, you know, the, you know, the gas, the gas is going to be sent to the flare. And there could be a couple of different reasons, you know, why it would go there. One would be that they're using the, you know, the existing AHE plant as a, you know, peaking station, so they turn that thing on. That particular plant, you know, can't handle all of the gas that's currently being generated by the landfill. And so presumably, the excess would go to the flares in that case. But that would, that, in that scenario, the excess that goes to the flares would be sulfur-treated gas. Another scenario is that the STS system is down, if the STS system's down, then the RNG plant is not going to work. And so in that case, the gas is directed to the flares. And then it would be, you know, wouldn't be controlled, so it would have sulfur, so it would release sulfur dioxide. When you mentioned odors, so one of the problems that we've seen that actually causes the odors, it's not so much the flares themselves, but it's fluctuations in the applied vacuum on the landfill. And so when you have, you know, different processes turning on and off. So the RNG plant goes online or it goes offline, the AHE plant goes on, goes offline. This causes fluctuations in the applied vacuum. If you're not pulling a sufficient amount of vacuum on the landfill, then the, the gas wells in the area surrounding the wells goes pressure positive. And so fugitives start escaping from the surface of the landfill. In fact, this just happened, you know, a couple nights ago. So it, it's something that, you know, we're aware of, it's a problem. And hopefully going forward, when all the bugs are worked out of the various new systems here, we'll see less vacuum fluctuating and associated odors with that.
Yeah, thanks. Because, because you have to capture that gas, then before you send it off, and like the flares, you know, that's one of the control ways, one after you've captured it. And that, that's like my understanding as well as that a lot of times it's the capture part where the problem is, Mike. And not necessarily, you're not smelling it from the actual flare. You're smelling it from something going on where the vacuum, it didn't pull the gases like it was supposed to.
Yep, so it's, landfills are complicated, I think is what we're all learning tonight. And I appreciate you guys giving that detailed information. David, I, I completely understand what your concerns are, especially with feeling like there isn't a limitation. And you know, that the way for gas not to go to the flares is because of money. But I think that is kind of an important part of that. I think there is definitely more information to be gleaned from how the permits are set up. And, you know, part of the conversation that Mike was having was laying this stuff out just to kind of talk through, you know, what the benefit is of to having these two new permits, you know, in whatever shape they end up in, if they end up being anything, you know, having this new equipment in and how that's going to hopefully help the situation there, including odors. And, you know, obviously, we can talk about this a little bit later as well. But, you know, when you guys are experienced oders, if you do, I know Mike talked about getting ahold of him. And he takes, you know, those odor investigations very seriously and tries to get out there as much as he possibly can to address anything that's going on at the landfill. I know it's a big place, so it can be, you know, hard as a resident being there and, and kind of experiencing that. So we do really just encourage you to reach out to Mike anytime you're having issues. It helps us help you. So please keep doing that and hopefully we got a little bit of the answer to your question here. And feel free to, you know, reach out or come back with another one. I do have somebody else that with their hand up on, they've been waiting very patiently. So I'm going to pass it over to Lauren Stanton. Lauren, I am unmuting you, so you should be. I'm not unmuting you. I'm allowing you to be able to unmute yourself. So whenever you're ready, you can go ahead and then ask your question.
Hi, thank you. And just so you know, Lauren Stanton is one of my staff. This is actually Senator Rosemary Bayer.
Oh, okay. Sorry, Senator. I appreciate you introducing yourself.
She must have registered as herself, which is great. I, you know, so I just want to make sure you know who you
I'm glad you're not incognito and you've introduced yourself. Much appreciated.
Trying to do that, not trying to do that yet. No, and I'm here because of course we're getting, getting more calls about the, about the smells. It's getting worse again. And so the odor. And so, and I'm really new to this. So this is a new part of my district. And I'm learning, you know, a little bit more about the issues, but, and I'm also not good with the science piece. But doesn't sulfur dioxide added to the flares make the smell, the odor even worse?
Yeah, I, Mike, do you want to address that a little bit? So you have a lot of experience out there dealing with the odor situation.
I mean, sulfur dioxide has some odor. But I don't believe I've ever smelled sulfur dioxide at, at Arbor Hills. I certainly have smelled, you know, hydrogen sulfide. I can't say it's impossible that you don't smell the sulfur dioxide. But generally, it's definitely less odorous and it's certainly much less toxic than H2S. So all things equal, you know, flaring certainly makes the landfill gas a lot less toxic than simply, you know, emitting landfill gas into the air.
I understand the goals.
Yep. Was that helpful, Senator? Do you have a follow-up question?
No, because it, well, no, it's really still the same question. I don't think we have a definitive answer, really. And I, I hate the notion that we're going to, you know, do stuff and then hope that it's okay, you know?
Well, and I think, so getting back to what Mike was saying, and maybe the description isn't as well, you know, as well done as we want it to be. But, you know, basically what this is saying is instead of just having the landfill off gassing and into the air directly closer to the breathing zone where people are walking around and things like that, having a flare that's going to off gas and burn that gas and put it higher up into the atmosphere is going to be less impactful to the residents around it. This, the sulfur dioxide, he's right, it doesn't really have, you know, that is not going to necessarily increase the odors in and of itself. And obviously not trying to justify that a landfill is going to be perfect. That's probably not going to happen. But this technology is there, and it is one of the things that does help reduce odors that has been shown in other cases too. So it, you know, adding all these things together and hopefully progressing this down the road a little bit more is going to make it better for residents that are living in the area. So maybe that helps, I guess. Um, so maybe that helps, I guess, and to me, it's like a visual of like, it's just coming out of the ground in the breathing zone. No, we don't want that. We want to be able to capture as much of that and put it in a place where we can get it up and away from. Residents and treat it in, you know, in appropriate ways. So I apologize for interrupting you. Go right ahead.
Oh, that's good. I'm glad that with the overall, what we're doing is trying to reduce the total amount of pollutants and I. You know, and if you have, if we've done this before and we see that this, you know, switch in the technology, right, and hopeful goal that it will continue to work and we won't. Revert back to the flares, that that. Future state is going to be a better state for the residents and the planet. Kind of a good combination.
I I was going to add, so hydrogen sulfide, you know, what's. Really just in the gas before you flare it or anything, what would be just fuming, you know, in the area and lofting over at at ground level. Has very um. Low threshold for odor, like, you know, very small concentration, stinks to high heaven, far before it like starts to actually um usually do physical harm to you or anything. It just is unpleasant. And so when you combust that, um, that's you end up with the SO2, which. Maybe high concentrations of SO2 would have an odor, but. Um, in our experience, that is not usually the problem. When you get, as I kind of implied to this earlier, when you get those order complaints, when you get those issues, it's. Um, usually from the capture part, so they didn't capture the H two S. And it does loft over and that has the very low threshold and that's what you're smelling. It's not. Probably, I'm not gonna say for sure, I'm not there, but I mean, it's probably not the SO2. Um. You know, those concentrations have to be very high and that's not what's anticipated. Um.
Well, when we go out, when Mike, when you go out to investigate the complaints. Do you know what's causing the complaints?
Um, you know, the odors at Arbor Hills are very complex. And. You know, the complaints, you know, they they try, you know, to the best of their ability to describe what they smell. But, you know, it's uh, it's hard for us, you know, at a given time to. You know, match up what a complaint smells to what we smell when we go out there. Um, you know, we're we're not instantly out there, um, the situation at the landfill, the weather conditions, the time of day. Things are constantly um changing. So, you know, at times we've been able.
We don't just rely on the sniffing of a human being to tell us what gases are are being emitted, do we? That doesn't seem like a very scientific approach.
Well, you know, so what's nice about a nose, you know, a nose, let's, let's not knock the nose, it has a really good sense of smell, most people do, it's surprisingly effective. It's mobile, right? And so that we can walk around with it. And go all around at different spots, whereas other equipment, we're a little bit more, you know, fixed. Especially for a specific pollutant, but you know, so it knows we, it really helps us a lot. But, you know, we definitely know, you know, what is in landfill gas to begin with. We have a good idea of what the products of combustion are, you know, when you flare it. And we also do have this, you know, perimeter monitoring system. The perimeter monitoring system, you know, monitors for methane and H two S. We monitor for methane principally as an indication. Uh, of um, you know, the presence of landfill gas. Methane is very easy to detect and monitor for. And so we can infer that, you know, when we have um. You know, a monitoring exceedance, in this case, we we've defined it as anything above uh forty parts per million methane. You know, for fifteen minutes, we know that. Uh, landfill gas is present in sufficient quantities that if it migrates off. Offsite, the other components in the landfill gas. Um, could cause an odor impact. Now, we have focused on H two S. There is another odorant that that is present in landfill gas. And that is mercaptans. And mercaptans are even more odorous um at low thresholds. Compared to hydrogen sulfide. You don't hear too much about them. Um, partially because we don't have an easy way. To set up a perimeter monitoring system. Uh, that monitors for um mercaptans because it's such a low concentration, it's really only um. One reason why we're concerned about it is because it's odorous. And as you might recall, you know, mercaptans are actually added. To natural gas. So that if you have a natural gas leak in your house. You'll actually smell something, so it's a very small amount, but you know, um, natural gas companies actually add mercaptan, so you can smell that. That smell, and so that also is in landfill gas.
Anything else from you, Senator, right now?
No, obviously, we don't have a solution to understanding what it is and being able to react when people are smelling it. That's that's what seems to be the conclusion. Well, we have some work to do.
Yeah, I I hear what you're saying on that, and I I definitely think potentially. Maybe a discussion at some point, just specifically around how. Complaint investigations work. I know we kind of touched on it today and but. I know the way that our staff are trained to identify odors in a very specific way, we have a very specific process for identifying odors. Um, with our noses, I know that sounds crazy, but we actually go to spe- special training to be able to use our noses to identify odors that um. Could be impacting residents and um. It is definitely a process that Mike is very familiar with. He brings out as many tools as we have at our fingertips when he does get out there and he is, does get out there as diligently as he can. So it. I I'm not sure if we're doing a good job describing it as, you know, as as diligent as we are.
I understand, I think the biggest issue is you only can be so responsive, right?
Yes.
You can only so often actually send someone there while everything is happening. It doesn't seem like a. A a very reliable method of solving this kind of problem.
Well, and that's.
Just never gonna have enough people to cover that.
No, and that's a good point, and I think we're really lucky in this case, actually, this is very, very rare to have this kind of perimeter monitoring where we can actually get some real time information. It's very rare. This is. You know, one of the only places really around that we have the ability to do that. So that is really one of our better tools that we have in our toolbox that we don't have in other facilities that are causing odor issues. Um, so I, you know, we're kind of thankful for that, honestly. Um, because we don't often have a tool like that, that's really showing us actual real time numbers, but. Um, and I just want to be cognizant of our time. I do have one other, two other questions, if that's okay.
No, that's totally fine. Yeah, I just wanted more than anything that to identify any differences that would make it worse, right? That's what we're worried about now. New stuff coming in, what's gonna happen? Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and I think, you know. Obviously, there's never a one hundred percent guarantee, but I do, you know, as we've kind of stated before, this is definitely steps to. Help us reduce some of those odors, not us personally, but the landfill, I guess, sorry, shouldn't put myself in that bucket. Um, so I don't work there, but um, so I had a question in the in the question box that I wanted to address just verbally, so everybody could hear it, and it, the question was just. Um, will the landscape of the landfill change due to the air permit being changed? The height keeps increasing. So that isn't something that's necessarily going to change with the air permit. Just wanted to make sure that everybody know, knew that they aren't going to be necessarily like making big piles um to make way for this new equipment, so. We shouldn't really be worried about that, at least associated with the air permit. There's probably other folks that could answer. That question that aren't necessarily in this meeting as far as what the ultimate plans are for the landfill. Um, and then David Drennan, I saw that you have your hand up again, so I didn't know if you wanted to ask one more follow up question. I'm gonna have you be the last one before we get into the hearing portion, and you should still be able to unmute your line.
There. Yeah, and and I I promise I'll just take a minute. I just wanted to say. The um. This permit action or the actions going on here are overall a very good thing for the community. The result, it's a result of an enforcement action that's been going on for years. That Mike has been a huge part of. And the Air Quality Division has been pushing, it took the uh. U S Department of Justice to get involved, uh, you know, MDEQ and the US EPA to get involved. To get the uh Arbor Hills Energy folks to finally come come around. They paid a significant fine and they made a significant investment here. Um, what it's going to do is it's going to virtually end the combustion of natural, of landfill gas at the site. And they're going to take the landfill gas and turn it into basically natural gas and put it in a pipeline. So overall, it's a very good thing for the community and a good thing for the environment, and maybe I started us off. A little harsh where um we were. Swiveling over some details of the permit, but maybe that's because I know Amber and Mike so well from working with them, because they're our friends. Um, and we still will quibble over those details, but this is overall a very good thing that's going to happening, um, and so thank you for what's going on.
Yeah, David, thank you.
And and for the Senator, we have a meeting with with you in in a week or two, and we'd love to give you a tour of the area if 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 your time permits.
I'll let her respond back to you, that I appreciate that. Uh, Senator, you should be able to speak uh and mute, unmute yourself if you want to respond today.
Thank you, yeah, I was, I was talking away, of course.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, and I appreciate that, and I do understand that this is uh moving in the right direction. I wish we could get enough stability there that we wouldn't need any flares, I wish, I mean, all those other things that we could still do. But I, and I also know a little bit about the history and getting that equipment put in place to help out with the problems there, so. I appreciate everything. I'm just going to be always watching to make sure that we don't do something that makes it worse again, so, yeah, thank you. I appreciate that, and I do want the tour, of course I do.
Good, all right, well, you guys connect. That sounds great. David, thank you for bringing that up. I know that you've known, you you have been very involved in this for a very long time, so I appreciate you kind of acknowledging. Um, the long history of work that's been done um for this facility. Uh, and I don't mind us quibbling about the details, that is why exactly why we're having these meetings, and if we're not doing a good job. Explaining what's going on or kind of telling that story, then we do count on you to hold us accountable for that, so. I do really appreciate you, you know, acknowledging that and bringing that up, and I know Amber and Mike do work really hard, but there's always room for improvement, especially when we're. Figuring out how to communicate these very complex issues and. A landfill is probably one of the more complex types of facilities that we deal with here in Michigan, and we have some other ones that kind of. Are up there as well, but landfills can be very complex and um. We don't want to say, hey, they're they're complex, so we can't talk about them. That's not, that's not a good reason to not be able to explain what's going on to our residents, so. Appreciate you kind of holding us accountable for that. Um, so panelists, that being said, you guys can go ahead and turn your cameras off. Thank you very much for being um available for any questions. And if you want to have your camera on, we're going to shift over to the hearing portion of the night now. And so I'm just gonna go over. A couple of things again, uh, there is a hearing statement that I will have to read. Out loud to basically kick off the meeting, but just to remind folks when we get to, that this is not a time where we will be able to respond to your questions, so oftentimes. People will ask questions in their comments, and I just wanted to just be clear that we wouldn't be able to respond to them during the this comment portion. I know we have a couple of people that have called in, so I'll remind you how to raise your hand um when we get to that point, but I'm also going to remind you. Right now, in case you want to raise your hand for um. The, to give a comment, and that's just clicking pound two on your phone. So um, if everybody can just be patient with me just for a minute here, I'm gonna go ahead and. Start us off and read this opening statement, and then we'll get to any comments that you might have. Okay, so good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this public hearing. My name is Jennifer Dixon, and I'm with Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, and I will be the hearing officer tonight. We have Annette Switzer, the Air Quality Division Director, and she is the decision maker for these permit applications. She's going to be listening to your comments this evening, and she will be considering all comments prior to making a decision. So this hearing is for two proposed permits at the Arbor Hills landfill located at one zero six one one West Five Mile Road, Northville, Michigan. These are for the proposed installation and operation of a renewable natural gas or RNG plant for Emerald RNG LLC and Arbor Hills RNG LLC. And that is application number APP dash two zero two two dash two zero. Sorry, zero two one four, I do need to be able to read. Um, and the proposed treatment and restriction of the natural gas burned in the existing turbines for Arbor Hills Energy LLC, and that's application number APP dash two zero two two. Dash zero two one five. The Air Quality Division is responsible for regulating sources of air pollutants to minimize adverse impacts on public health and the environment. The law governing those responsibilities is Part Fifty-Five of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act. Before the companies can make any of the requested changes, they must obtain a permit that meets the requirements of Michigan's air quality laws. This means the equipment must be capable of meeting state and federal emission standards, including health-based standards. The proposed permits must also contain conditions that include emission limits. And specific ways of operating the equipment to ensure that these standards are met. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested in the proposed permits an opportunity to provide information the department may use. In deciding whether to approve the permits or if there are additional issues to consider. So please note the proposed permits are still draft permits. This does not mean the department has already made a decision. Instead, it reflects an initial technical review of the proposals. We have, we hope having the details of the draft permits available will help you in providing comments. Everything in the draft permits remains open for comment and further consideration by the department, including whether the permits will be granted at all. Please recognize the department can only use information you provide if it relates to the criteria the department must use in making a decision. For example. Concerns related to local zoning, truck traffic and noise are not within our authority. Some of you may want to simply express your support or opposition of the proposed projects. We are happy to make note of your position, but please understand. That the department is by law not allowed to base our decision on whether there is widespread support or opposition to the proposed projects. This hearing is being recorded and your comments will be part of the information the department will consider in making its decision on the proposed projects. The public comment period for the proposed permits began on April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three and will end at midnight on May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Additional comments or information may be submitted through that time via written or verbal comment this during this this hearing by email or by voicemail. After the close of the public comment period, the decision maker will review all written and verbal comments received. All significant air quality related comments will be considered, at which point a final decision on the permit application will be made by the decision maker. The decision maker may deny the permit. Approve it as drafted or approve them with amendments. If approved, the decision must specify which provisions of the draft permits, if any. Have been changed in the final permits and the reason for the changes. In all three scenarios, all interested parties, including everyone who was on the original mailing list. Anyone who provided comments during the public comment period and anyone who attended the public hearing will be directly notified of the decision. Included in the mailing will be a letter from the decision maker regarding the decision and if applicable, the approved permits. As stated previously, you may submit a comment. At any time during the comment period by US post or email, or you may call into the public comment voicemail. And I'll give you details on how to do that uh after the hearing's over. You may also type the word comment into the question box and submit your comment in writing. I will read aloud all comments you submit via the question box unless you state do not read. If you would like to make a verbal comment, you may raise your hand and I'll unmute your line so you can speak. We'll limit your comment time to about three minutes, so if you're speaking, I'll let you know when you have about thirty seconds left, and I'll do my best to address commenters. In the order your hands were raised, but please bear with us as the technology does have challenges for doing that. Please recognize department staff are here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your views on the proposed projects and listen to your comments. So thank you so much for your attention, and I will now begin calling the names of those who have indicated they would like to make a statement. Uh, so like we said before, we did have one person, David Horan, you were the only one who um. Said that you would like to make a comment when you registered for the hearing. So if you would like to make a comment, if you want to go ahead and raise your hand again, I will go ahead and unmute you so you can make a comment. Anyone else use that raise hand icon to make your comment, um, or you can use. Pound two on your phone if you're listening via the telephone. So I'll give you guys just a couple of minutes to do that, and David, no pressure, you don't have to make a comment tonight. I just wanted to remind you that you had mentioned that you wanted to, and I wanted to make sure you knew you were first in line. Okay, so. Let me just unmute you again, David, and if you would like to, just please state your name for the record and then go ahead with your comment whenever you're ready.
Yeah, hi, my name is David Haran. And uh. My, I guess my comment is I want to thank Eagle for all the work they do to try to protect the residents. Who live in the vicinity of the Arbor Hills landfill. Um, in terms of not just odor complaints, but really from our health, from breathing. Whatever's in that air that we smell coming from. whatever's in that air that we smell coming from the Arbor Hills landfill. So thank you very much for, for listening to us and for following up on our odor complaints. Uh, it really means a lot to us. Um, and the only other comment I would make is I, I just want to ensure any, any, any application, permit application from the operators of Arbor Hills GFL. Um, just please make sure there's always some type of, uh, verification of what they say they're gonna do. Um, because as we've seen throughout the years, they've had numerous violations where they basically violate the law, right? They don't follow the law and they receive a violation. They've been sued by the Attorney General and the Department of Justice, so um, they don't have a good track record of actually doing what they say they're gonna do. So just make sure that there's some checks and balances in any type of, uh, approval you give. Thank you very much for letting me talk.
Yeah, thank you so much for your comment and apologies for mispronouncing your last name this whole evening. I hope to better next time. So I'm just giving everybody else a chance, if you would like to make a comment tonight, to raise your hand. Let's give you another minute or so. Okay, Mr. Drennan, would you like to state your name for the record and then go ahead and make your comment whenever you're ready? You should still be able to unmute yourself. I'll make sure that you can.
So, so before I, does it hurt to do this in writing and in verbally, or is it?
Um, you know, all the comments are-
Your system?
They're, I know we're not really supposed to answer questions, but since this is about how to make a comment, no, it's totally fine. Um, they're counted the same, so doing it twice doesn't necessarily, you know, make more of a difference. Um, but sometimes if you make a comment verbally, if you're just speaking it and not reading it, maybe you aren't saying everything that you want, so it certainly doesn't hurt to follow up in writing.
Okay. Well, my name is David Drennan, and I want to echo what, uh, Dave Haran said, is that we, we do appreciate the efforts of, uh, Eagle. Um, especially the, the people we know very well at Eagle because they're out here all the time and, and taking their phone calls. Um, it, it is making a difference, but, but it still is a big problem here. And, and my comment, comment basically, I've kind of already covered it, but I'll cover it again. You know, the landfill is one contiguous site for emissions, and the entire site must be considered when we're issuing a permit, regardless of who owns the various emission, um, um, entities on the site. So my comment is, is the sulfur treatment system, the STS, as they say it in the, um, permit applications, is basically add-on pollution, and add-on pollution control device. And there should be operating parameters just defined in the permits. Um, there should be language in the permits that requires the STS to, to be, to process, to be online and processing, uh, operating properly, regardless of what the final route of the landfill gas is, whether it's going to the RNG plant or the energy recovery turbines or the flares. Currently, the permits only require desulfurized landfill gas when, when we're routing the gas to the renewable natural gas plant or to the energy recovery plant. And when we route, or when the landfill routes the, uh, landfill gas to the, uh, flares, there's no requirement, any of the permits, to have any desulfurization going on. Um, the net effect of that is that although I, I don't think the landfill will have any intention of doing this, the net effect is that they could route all the landfill gas to the flares. And I'll have to talk to Amber about this later, but I don't see how there'd be any reduction in SO two if they routed all the landfill gas to the flares. It would be the exact same as it is today. Um, as part of the consent decree, Arbor Hills Energy agreed to install a pipeline which allows the desulfurized landfill gas from the outlet of the STS process to be routed to landfill flares. So figure one of their permit application shows that that process capability exists. Um, so all we're asking is that the permit application or the permits have that requirement that they have to do that, so that when they're not doing it, um, we can enforce that or the, the state can enforce that. Um, I will, I will submit these in writing also, so if I miss something, we'll get it. But once again, I thank you, and I thank you for the public hearing tonight, and I'll just see you, Jennifer.
Yeah, thank you. No, I didn't get to see you, Dave, sorry. Maybe sometime we'll allow cameras to be turned on, but that can be questionable sometimes, I think, but I appreciate the comments for sure. Um, I just want to make sure nobody else has a comment before we close the hearing. I want to make sure everybody has a chance to speak if they'd like to. Annette, so are you okay with me closing out the hearing at this point?
Yes, you can go ahead.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and I just need to read a closing statement, and then we have a couple of other things to go over before we end the meeting tonight. So, um, thank you all for taking the time to participate in this meeting tonight. We do appreciate your interest in protecting Michigan's air quality. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, the public comment period will close at midnight on May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. And all interested parties, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period, and anyone who attended this public hearing will be directly notified of the final decision on this proposed permit. The hearing is now closed, so thank you again for that. And then I just muted myself. Sorry about that. A couple of other slides, uh, before we end the meeting tonight. Just to want to go over a few things that might be helpful for you. So, um, you all heard that Dave Drennan was planning on providing some information in writing. That's perfectly fine to do. You can do that either like by US post. So you would send that to our permit section manager at Eagle, and that's E G L E, uh, AQD, which stands for Air Quality Division. Uh, the address is P O Box three zero two six zero, and that's in Lansing. And then the zip code for that is four eight nine zero nine dash seven seven six zero. Um, and then you can also just send those to us via email. It's the same thing as in writing. We kind of treat it the same. And that email address is at, um, Eagle, so E G L E dash AQD dash PTI, so Paul Tom Igloo, publiccomments@michigan.gov. So PTI Public Comments is all one word. So eagle dash AQD dash PTI Public Comments at michigan.gov. Um, and then a lot of times people will even just call us and read their statement to our voicemail. That's also perfectly acceptable. You can just give us a call at five one seven two eight four zero nine zero zero. Um, if you want other information, I know Caitlin shared the link to this in the chat, so you can grab it from there. But just wanted to go over what you might find there. If you're kind of new to this, I know we heard that too. Oftentimes, we have folks that are kind of like, oh, what is this about? Um, and then want to find more information. So we have different kind of levels of information at this website. Um, the proposed project summary is kind of a high-level overview of what the company was asking for, a little bit of the review of the rules, um, what parts of the permit you might want to focus on if you're intending to make a comment. Um, and a little, little bit of extra things like that. It's very high-level, just a few pages. The technical fact sheets really digs into the air quality rules and regulations. It talks about what rules apply, how Amber did her evaluation, um, a little bit on how, you know, she integrated the work from the other folks that were on the panel tonight. Um, so there's a lot more detail in that documented, so if you're interested in digging a little deeper. Um, the proposed permit terms and conditions are also there, so those two permits and what we're proposing those conditions to be, if you have questions about those, you know, feel free to reach out. We're happy to talk through those. Those can be, if you're not used to looking at air permits, um, you might say, you know, what is this actually saying? We're happy to kind of translate that for you. Um, links to the meeting recordings, the turnaround time is a little bit tight on this one because the comment period does close on Monday. So we're gonna do our best to post a link to the hearing. Um, hopefully tomorrow, we're gonna work on that. I'm, I'm not promising anything, but we're gonna do our best. Um, it won't be closed captioned though. We usually close caption them so that they're easily translated into other languages, um, if that is something that's helpful for folks. Not sure we'll be able to meet that expectation though. Um, and then this is who to contact, so that, these are the folks that were on the panel tonight. And I know we have, um, Susan Kilmer on there instead of Erica Wolf. But so if you are interested in finding out information on air monitoring and you want to reach out to Ambrosia, um, she's, can be have very easily give you Erica's contact information as well. Um, so because we have a couple of folks on the phone, I'm just gonna read out, um, Amber's contact information in case that's helpful. So her email address is, um, her last name, Brown, like the color, the letter A, and then the number thirty-nine. So brownA39@michigan.gov, and you can also reach her by phone at five one seven seven three zero one one five eight. So I always like to at least read one of those out, um, and Amber is, you know, happy to kind of transfer you to whoever else you might need to talk to. So again, everybody, thank you so much for taking the time. I know you heard from Annette in the beginning, um, how much we appreciate people taking the time out of their day to be here. We recognize that everybody has other stuff going on, especially as the weather gets nicer and it's staying lighter longer. Uh, these kind of meetings get harder and harder to take the time to attend. So we really do appreciate everybody, um, joining with us tonight. And I'm gonna go ahead and end the meeting for all of us, and, um, hopefully you guys have a great rest of your day, and we look forward to talking to you more soon.